For thirteen fourteen Jones Street. Five, resolution approving historic Pearl Street facade improvement funding. Six, resolution approving the I D O T official financial report for city streets. Seven, resolution scheduling a hearing on a fifteen hundred dollar civil penalty or thirty day suspension of a permit issued to Transit General Store twenty-three twenty-four Transit Avenue for violation of the cigarette laws. Eight, motion appointing Karina Pedrosa to the Gillian Jillan Kosovo Sister City Committee for a partial term expiring December thirty-one twenty twenty and reappointing her for a three year term expiring December thirty-one twenty twenty-three. Agenda item nine, resolution authorizing final payment to Mark Albanetius for the Bridgeport Roadway Improvements Phase Four Project. Ten, actions relating to grants. Ten A, resolution accepting the submission of a local housing trust fund program application to the I F A and approving matching funds. Ten B, resolution approving a meth drug hotspot grant from the Office of Drug Control Policy to assist the Police Department with investigations. Item eleven, actions relating to street closures. A, resolution temporarily closing portions of Floyd Boulevard and Jefferson Street October seventeen for the North High School Homecoming Parade. Eleven B, resolution temporarily closing various streets in the Morningside area September nineteenth for the East High School Homecoming Parade. Agenda item twelve, actions rejecting bids. Twelve A, resolution rejecting all bids for the Floyd Park Golf Course Drainage Improvements Project. Twelve Bs, resolution rejecting all bids for the Bluff Road Bridge Project. On these two items in particular, twelve A and twelve B, I would like to have a full council that would include the mayor to make a decision whether to actually reject these bids and I would, I would like to move that we defer this item until a week from today, September sixteen twenty nineteen.
Before we do that, let's have.
Yes.
Let's hear it.
Oh, I'm just, this Gordon Ferris, city engineer, I'm up here to answer any questions if you had them.
Would that be a problem if we do that, if we defer it?
Uh, not for the Floyd Golf, it would delay a little bit on the getting the contractor out there during the winter season, so he can beat the, he, she can beat the weather and provide a ample time to correct the landscaping or fix the landscaping in time for the golf season. For the Bluff Road Bridge Project, that will delay the, it will delay it by another month on the bid letting on that one.
If that's the way we go, I have some questions for Gordon that I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask probably during the next week anyway, because I, I read the write-ups and I'm not convinced that rejecting the bids is the appropriate way to go, but I need to visit with you about it and I just did not have time to give you that call today to do so. So, and I, and I still would like to, on, on projects of this size, I think it's important that we have all of us together. I know we're very fortunate as a city council and the mayor that we all get, we all meet on a regular basis every week and so there's nothing that would, I would think otherwise unless some of you already know that you might not be here next month.
I'll be here.
I still would like.
My thought is a week, seven more days isn't gonna cause that, as long as it's active upon next week.
I'll second the motion. That's on twelve A for this.
Yes.
Gretkin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Did you wanna speak on this?
Okay, and then item twelve B, resolution, resolution rejecting all bids for the Bluff Road Bridge Project, I would move to defer this item to September sixteen twenty nineteen. Need a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Moore?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Gretkin?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Item thirteen, actions relating to agreements and contracts. I should ask, I'm sorry, on twelve A and B, was there anybody here that wanted to address twelve A or twelve B that we just deferred for a week? I'm glad we did it early enough in the meeting that hopefully didn't cause anybody a problem. Okay, item, agenda, item thirteen, actions relating to agreements and contracts. Thirteen A, resolution approving the contract with Western Specialty for the Heritage Parking Ramp Repairs Project. Thirteen B, resolution approving a contract to Substurfco for the South Saint Aubin Alley Storm Sewer Improvements Project. Thirteen C, resolution approving a contract with Strong Construction for the six fourteen Pier Street Emergency Paving Project. Thirteen D, resolution directing the city manager to sign a release of mortgage promissory note and agreement for covenants and restrictions with Woodbury Park under the Home Investment Partnership Program. Thirteen E, resolution directing the city manager to sign a funding agreement with South Sioux City for Home Investment Partnership Program Funds. Thirteen F, resolution approving a First Amendment to Marketing Agreement with HomeServe for a Service Line Protection Program. Thirteen G, resolution awarding a contract to Global Engineering for the Milwaukee Railroad Shops Historic District Roundhouse Enhancement Project. And by the way, if you haven't been out to the Milwaukee Railroad Museum, it's spectacular. It's just amazing that we have that in Sioux City and, and I'm telling you, everybody that's gone that I talk with, they just have loved the experience. So if you haven't been out there, please make an effort to see the railroad, Milwaukee Railroad Shops Museum.
And Dan, I, I'll add to that because they have, you can't miss the Halloween party they have out there. It is absolutely phenomenal and they, it's, it's just set up for the kids and it's, they do a wonderful job, so that's one of the great things that they do for the city, so we appreciate it.
Very good. Thirteen H, resolution approving a development agreement with H C C and a development property agreement with H C C and Sortino Asset Management for renovations of an existing building in the Donner Park Urban Renewal Area. Thirteen I.
I just wanted to say a few words, I know we have Jeff in the audience, I just wanted to thank you and your team for the work and I know city staff has been working closely on this as well. I think this is gonna be something that's gonna be just, to use your words, a game changer, you know, Jeff, I know that that's how you see it as well and I think for the future of this community, I think you're seeing it transform. Um, I think this is gonna be a great Phase One of the project and looking forward for the, the city to continue working with you on this. I appreciate your, all your efforts.
I think it's also a great stabilizer for that, that area, that retail area that has seen.
Absolutely.
With the loss of a major tenant, to have a new major tenant like this come in will be, really bolster that, that retail area.
Yeah, to repurpose that building, I think is great. If you wanna come up and say a few words.
Would you like to make some comments?
Yeah.
Oh, sure, that'd be excellent. Thank you.
I think that can be beneficial.
Absolutely.
No, so absolutely, Alex, thank you so much for that. Obviously that means a lot for us, you know, to start with. Uh, I just wanna thank all of you for your consistent faith in us and belief in what we're trying to accomplish here. Um, you know, we're, we're never going to quit until kids in our community are on the same level playing field regardless of demographic background or have you that other kids and other light communities have. Um, just a quick, some quick updates on the, on the project itself, obviously if you've driven past, you've seen there's been some major things happening, we're, we're moving right along. Um, we're already seven figures into what will be a three million dollar investment into renovations in that facility. We'll have some really cool announcements in regards to how we're gonna rebrand that, that, or that area as a whole. Um, you know, from December to April, we already have ten major events planned, we've got, we're partnering with groups like Omaha Sports Academy and light groups throughout the Midwest, Sioux City will be on that circuit, um, so we'll be able to offer those there. Uh, you know, we've got four hundred kids already involved in arena programming and we don't have a facility yet, we're currently running that out of Morningside College, Western Iowa Tech, um, and in those types of situations. Obviously, you know, the arena, uh, it's more than just a building, uh, the arena is a, is kind of an idea, it's an ideal, you know, you can't, you know, you, what we believe is that it's all about the people that you bring in to run the facility, you know, we've, we've brought on people like Corey, the Corey Westers of the world and the Jessica Stevenson's and Clint Kudums and Dustin Coopers and just people in this community that are already doing tremendous things in, in the athletic realm and, uh, we hope to just really elevate their platform while providing a lot of different new opportunities for kids here. So, again, truly, thank you so much for, for, for being with us, for being beside us, for supporting us, uh, we hope we can create something that Sioux City will be proud of for many years to come.
And a big thank you to you too, for all that you're doing and, and just sticking with it. Thank you.
Well, and I was gonna say too, if the council was aware of this, and I wasn't aware until that day, but one of the examples and I think testament to really what you're trying to do as far as a community project that I appreciate was, um, this weekend, and I'll speak a little bit more to it later on, but was the Miracle League All-Star Tournament and how the arena came behind it was a presenting sponsor for that Friday night, is that correct?
That's correct.
And so I just wanted to, thank you so much for that, that, that was something that I definitely was proud of to see your name and see you sponsoring in that way.
Absolutely, I mean Kevin Niegard and, and the, the team there, what an incredible event to have in this community, you know, if it is our mission, it's to, to provide opportunities for athletes, um, of all walks of life, uh, throughout the country and the world, Miracle League does just an exceptional, uh, job of that and we were very excited to be behind it. I mean, if anybody was out there, it was an electric, joyful atmosphere and, uh, that's what we're about.
That was cool.
It was good.
So thank you for doing that.
I really wait to see more.
Would you please, would you please state your name and, um, address for the recording?
I will, uh, Jeff Carlson, uh, H C C Enterprises, The Arena, uh, six hundred fourth Street, Suite five oh four, Sioux City, Iowa.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks Jeff.
Thanks Jeff.
Thank you.
Thanks Dan.
Agenda item thirteen I, resolution approving change order number three to the contract with John T. Jones Construction for the wastewater treatment plant de-watering and odor control improvements Phase One Project. Agenda item fourteen, actions relating to personnel. Fourteen A, resolution amending the community, community development authorized payroll complement by adding an administrative secretary within the Neighborhood Services Division. Fourteen B, resolution amending the position classification by approving an updated job description for the Arts Center Director, Apatz's position. Item fifteen, actions relating to property. Fifteen A, resolution granting a permit to Fibercom for maintain, maintaining underground cable in the area of Leech Avenue and South Fairmont Street. Fifteen B, John Street, B one, resolution proposing to sell part of vacated John Street at twenty-one oh one Plum Creek Road, petitioners Sylvia Castle and Lance and Valerie Fashman. Fifteen B two, resolution proposing to grant an easement for part of vacated John Street at Plum Creek Road, petitioner Heidi Frank and Jay Olian. Item sixteen, purchasing. For sixteen A, resolution awarding a purchase order to Stage Right Corporation for stage equipment at the Tyson Event Center. Sixteen B, resolution approving renewal option number two with high chin for polymer and fiber like, hyperfluc for the water treatment plant. Did I clobber those words for you enough?
That's perfect.
Thanks for your support.
Yes.
Uh, that was sixteen B. Item, agenda item seventeen, applications for beer liquor license, see the list and come forward if you have any questions. Item eighteen, receipt of minutes, see the list and come forward if you have any questions. This is the end of the consent agenda and we will ready to vote, is there anyone to be heard on any of the consent agenda items? Okay, thank you. Our consent agenda passes four zero with Mayor Scott absent. Hearings, item, agenda item nineteen, hearing and resolution approving construction documents for the Riverfront Trail Connection Project. Is there a motion, or I'll make a motion to approve?
Second.
Uh, the public hearing is now open, would anyone like to speak for or against this There being none, the hearing is now closed. Motion passes four zero. Item twenty, hearing and resolution approving proposal to sell part of the vacated east-west alley at eighteen hundred West First Street and authorizing a city deed, petitioner Virginia Property. I'll move agenda item twenty.
Second.
The public hearing is now open, would anyone like to speak for or against this There being none, the hearing is now closed. Item twenty passes on a four zero vote. Agenda item twenty-one, hearing and resolution approving proposal to sell part of the vacated north-south alley at twelve thirteen South Royce Street and authorizing a city deed, petitioner Isla Jean Barr. I'll move that item.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, the public hearing is now open, would anyone like to speak for or against this resolution? There being none, the hearing is now closed. Agenda item twenty-one passes four zero. Agenda item twenty-two, hearing and resolution approving plans and specs for the Transit Fuel Tank Project. I'll move that item.
Second.
Thank you. The public hearing is now open, would anyone like to speak for or against this resolution? How does this tie in? Who's in charge of this one? Where is this one, where is this project exactly and taking place?
Uh, Mike Coletta, Assistant City Manager, it's at our fourth street maintenance facility. It's not at the central campus.
It is not?
No, it's at the Transit Maintenance Facility.
Any questions or comments by anyone? Okay, thanks Mike. Motion passes four to zero. Agenda item twenty-three, hearing and resolution approving plans and specs for the North Hanger Area Drainage Basin and Drainage Improvements Project at Gateway Airport. I'll move that item.
Second.
The public hearing is now open, would anyone like to speak for or against this There being none, the hearing is now closed. Motion passes four to zero. Agenda item twenty-four, hearing and resolution approving plans and specs for the Airport Terminal Renovation Project. I'll move that item.
Second.
Public hearing is now open, would anyone like to speak for or against this resolution? There being none, the hearing is now closed. The motion passes four to zero. Agenda item twenty-five, hearing and resolution accepting the proposal of Suland Concrete for Land in the Combined Floyd River Urban Renewal Area and authorizing development and minimum assessment agreements. I'll move that item.
Second.
The public hearing is now open, would anyone like to speak for or against this This is a, I'm gonna get my thoughts together, cause I had to change gears, uh, this one is the win-win situation, correct? This is a win-win because, um, well first of all, uh, we have Suland Concrete expanding and growing and staying in our community.
Mm-hmm.
That's a very good thing. That's the first win. The second win is that Cargill and the small businesses in the area are going to hopefully see, uh, less traffic congestion. Um, if Cargill can purchase some of the land, uh, we'll see some improvements in that area, so both Cargill and our small businesses in that area that have been having, uh, as any business would, having some traffic congestion issues and other items, uh, that should alleviate many of those problems. So, this is a really exciting project that's going on. Chris, did you wanna add anything or make some comments about it?
Coming up in case you had any questions.
I thought you were coming up to correct me on anything I might miss.
Everything you've said is correct.
Okay, but no, this, this is a really, really good project, so I'm, I'm excited.
Well, it'd be really good for truck traffic also, cause if, if they purchase the land.
Yeah, the trucks coming in.
The trucks are coming.
Absolutely, so.
Everybody.
And, and Cargill, I mean, as we all know, Cargill is, is a very important partner in our, uh, city, but as, as well as the small businesses that we want to support and, and try to have everybody coexist, and I think this will go a long way toward that, at least I'm hopeful that it will. Anyone else to be heard on item twenty-five? The hearing is now closed. Do you have us in yet? Cause my.
Dan, I'm just missing yours.
Pardon?
I'm just picking yours.
Oh, cause my light's not on. I have the abstained lip and not the aye or the nay, I'm trying to hit yes.
I'll call the vote, that way it's right. Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Gretkin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye. Votes four zero, um, resolution passes. Uh, agenda item twenty-six, hearing and resolution determining an area of the city to be blighted and an economic development area, designating it as an urban renewal project and adopting amendment number two to the amended and restated Donner Park Urban Renewal Plan for the Donner Park Urban Renewal Area. I'll move that item.
Second.
The public hearing is now open, would anyone like to speak for or against this resolution?
This is another one that I think is pretty great for the community.
Mm-hmm, it is. There being none, the hearing is now closed. Motion passes four zero. Agenda item twenty-seven, hearing and resolution determining an area of the city to be blighted in an economic development area, designating it as an urban renewal project and adopting amendment number one to the amended and restated Combined Floyd River Urban Renewal Plan for the Combined Floyd River Urban Renewal Area. I'll move that item.
Second.
Thanks Rhonda. The public hearing is now open, would anyone like to speak for or against this resolution? There being none, the hearing is now closed. Motion passes four to zero. Ordinances, agenda item twenty-eight, resolution approving a reinvestment district contract amendment number two with the I E D A. I'll move that item.
Second.
Is there anyone to be heard on item twenty-eight? Motion passes four to zero. Agenda item twenty-nine, ordinance adding a new chapter to the municipal code entitled Sioux City Reinvestment District. I'll move first reading. Anyone to be heard? First reading passes four to zero. Any objections to waiving the statutory rules?
No.
I'll move that, um, we waive the statutory rule.
Second.
Capron?
Aye.
Gretkin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
I'll move second and third reading. Second and third readings pass, four to zero. Under discussion items, agenda item thirty, resolution approving payment to InfraTrak for emergency repairs to the Gravity Sewer under Interstate twenty-nine, I'll move that. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you Pete. Any discussion, anyone to be heard? Motion passes four to zero. Agenda item thirty-one, resolution approving a contract to Nelson Construction for the Police Station Evidence Storage Shed Project. I'll move that item. Anyone to be heard?
Lisa, I guess I would just ask, I, I understand the need, I'm, I, I think I would echo your frustration with state law that requires you to hold on to this material that oftentimes goes discarded or no one picks up anyway, it's just, it's kind of a frustrating thing that we have to build a hundred and twenty thousand dollar storage shed to just store people's junk. Is that, is this not as frustrating for you as it is for me, I mean, seeing the expense of this to just hold these people's stuff?
Lisa Clay's Police Department.
I don't wanna put words in your mouth, I guess I'm frustrated.
Yeah, well, I'm very frustrated with that, although that's not the total of the project.
Yeah.
Obviously, we have a bike cage, um, that we continue to bring in bikes and right now.
But it's the same thing of storing people's, you know.
Yeah, so, um, and recently, I don't know, I thi, I think maybe you're aware, but we had done a change because of all of this property that we have to take in for everybody else and basically, we made a form, so we were calling it personal property because under the state law, when we take in, um, property, found property or evidence, you have to hold it for sixty, for ninety days, um, and then have to make contact or attempt to make contact with the people. But when we take the things from the people that we arrest, um, we have them sign a form saying they have thirty days to come get their property or we're gonna dispose of it, but we still have thirty days and.
A holding time.
That builds up, yes. And not everybody comes back for it, so.
So how long do you hold it after that time?
No, then, then we immediately, after, for, for those items, we immediately dispose of it.
And I think.
Immediately.
And I think you've told me this before and just, but just remind me, some of the bikes and different other property that can be sold or donated or done, do we do that? I mean.
Yes, we absolutely do, in fact, um, some of them aren't worth anything, in fact, I think she just emptied out twenty-five today, the city, uh, had brought a truck over and helped us load them up and we take them down and, take them down to State Steel or one of the steel companies and, and get what we can get for them. And then I know she had six that she said were good and I know we were gonna donate them to Girls Inc. and this time.
Yeah.
So we try to take them, not everybody wants them, they're not the best condition, but these are in relatively good condition.
Well, and what I wondered too is, and I, and I don't know this, again, I'm just spiveling, but I wondered about like if we collaborate with Albrecht Cycles or something like that, you know what I mean, if anyone.
They've helped, I think, on some things, haven't they?
They've helped on some other things, I know that it was one of the suggestions with the new, um, community policing roles that we have, I don't know if you've heard about them, but we have a sergeant. And an officer specifically assigned, one of the things that I asked them is to try to see about ways of finding someone to collaborate with and fix up the bikes, some of the old ones. We used to be able to take them, I thought that was a good idea, but, so it's, so it's on their list of things to do, but, uh, we used to, actually, the state prison, or the federal prison up in South Dakota used to come down about twice a year and they'd get a whole bunch, they just get the pieces and parts and they would replace and we do all the bikes, but they're not doing that anymore, so. So we just, it's, it's a constant, right now, our police garage is filled with bikes on top of that storage container on the street, they're just filled with bi, it's filled with bikes.
Alex, part of the frustration start, started in nineteen eighty-five when they built that police fire headquarters building because they only made the basement three quarters the size of the building. If they'd have finished it out one hundred percent, we'd probably have the room, but it, uh, it really made it very difficult to, uh, store proper, uh, properly store evidence that was, uh, put in the basement, which is where.
Yes.
Most of it was, and they've done some renovations and remodeling over the years, but there just isn't enough room and.
Eighty-five.
Yeah, nineteen eighty-five.
One year before the mayor took. One year before the mayor took his first, one year before he took his first go around.
Well, I'm still thankful there was a brand-new building then, because you should have seen what we were in before that, but...
Yeah.
I just think that's very frustrating, but I'm glad that there are efforts to at least repurpose and reuse, I mean, that's, I just throw out Albrecht, just because it's downtown, it's a good Sioux City company, I just didn't know if they would be interested in helping out in any capacity, but anything we can do to at least repurpose this, if we're going to spend this much money to store it, I hope that at least there can be some good from it.
Yeah, and actually, about of that building, thirty-six thousand dollars of that is just for those bike racks. The way we had them before, it was almost impossible, we tried to hang them to try to take up as much space. So these new bike racks are such that you slide two in, it's a four-rack system, and we've got multiple of those. And then the top one, you can actually turn the bike, slide it up there and just push it up, it's a lot easier.
Rather than trying to lift, yeah, I saw that.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's a lot better system.
And it'll all be enclosed, right?
All be enclosed, and in fact, another thing that we thought of after when we were enclosing it that came up was exhaust, because it's going to get awful hot, so we had to put an exhaust fan in. Little things here and there that came up, so hopefully we'll do it right this time and that will be it.
Well, yeah.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Is everybody in?
Rhonda, I'm just waiting on yours. Thank you.
Motion for agenda item thirty-one passes four to zero. Item thirty-two, citizen concerns, Kyle Miller. Don't go away, Ernie, well. Kyle?
Thank you, my name is Kyle Miller, I live at three seven one four Maplewood Street in the north side of Sioux City. On Wednesday, August twenty-eighth, at around eight-thirty a.m., my daughter and I were nearly struck by a car. We were walking back home along Sylbian Way from Perry Creek Elementary after dropping my son off at school. The driver of the car was not speeding, nor was he driving while distracted, he simply could not see us, and that's what he told us when he stopped to apologize. That section of the road does not have sidewalks, and the curve of the road limits visibility significantly. Additionally, the sun kind of shines right in your eyes during the morning hours, makes it even harder to see. These conditions make it extremely hazardous to walk along these few blocks. We need sidewalks here, and not just for my family or the twenty or so other families who attend Perry Creek who would benefit, but for the hundreds in our neighborhood. I do have a few pictures that would help illustrate this issue if you're interested, I know on the purpose of time.
Yeah.
Very good, let me, um...
Sure, no.
Yeah, bring them up.
Just hand it to Mr. Padmore.
I'll take it. Mayor and council, we'll get something back to you on what we can do to get sidewalks installed.
Okay. Did the, I'm glad you're bringing this to our attention, we appreciate that, did the, is that the same area where we were doing the double striping?
Well, there was some sewer improvements that were completed recently, and the road is still torn up a bit from that, or the grass is still torn up. And if I could point out just a bit, it's kind of a tricky area, and the pictures help demonstrate that, the first page there is...
It's kind of a blind area when you're coming around there.
It absolutely is, and the geography doesn't help at all, so the first page is kind of an overview with where I think the easiest place would be in that red, where we need those sidewalks. The second page is a Google Street View of the area, and that kind of shows what it looks like, but the third page is even more illustrative, and that's what I took with my phone when I was walking my kids, and that shows, I mean, that's...
That's that one?
That's that one. You probably can't see in there, my wife is walking on the left, my daughter is walking on the right, and you can't see them, and that's exactly what you see when you're driving your car. So, and you can see, and on the left side of that street, it's a pretty big embankment, and on the right side, there's a big drop-off. It's not an easy place to put sidewalks, and furthermore, it's tricky because the property owners on the right, they're on a different street.
Yeah, what time of day is this?
About eight-thirty a.m.
This picture is?
That picture's eight-thirty, you can, I mean, the sun's coming up, I'm walking, walking there, it's...
Wow, yeah.
And as you can imagine, that's a busy time.
Just looking west, yeah.
Oh, it's real busy.
Yeah. Yep, one other note if I can add to this, while speaking with my neighbors about this problem, I learned about a tragic part of our town's history. You may remember Connie Bodine, former city manager and councilman, his daughter was struck and killed by a car while walking home from school along Country Club Boulevard. According to Sioux City Journal article from the time, her death contributed to the drive to install sidewalks along Country Club, and it should not take an event like that to get sidewalks installed. It's easy to see how something similar could happen here, and I really want to know what can we do to help prevent that sort of thing from happening.
And you're talking about sidewalks on Maplewood as well.
Well, Maplewood would definitely help. I think that would be a bit easier for property owners to help out with, simply because, you know, we're all right there, but this particular area, it's really tricky.
You're right, it's a tough one.
You see Mr. Padmore before you leave, just real quick, I want to thank you for the way you presented this to council and the manner you did it, it's very helpful, and we appreciate that, so we will look into it and get an answer back to you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for being here, Kyle.
Thank you.
Thank you.
John, are you here, John? I see you, I see you from time to time, how are you doing, John?
We're doing okay. What I'm calling, John Glazza, Pier Street Laundry, nineteen ten Pierce, here in Sioux City, been there for twelve, thirteen years. What I'm here to talk about is the construction or lack of construction project we have going on Pier Street. I'm sorry I didn't bring visual aids for everybody, but what we've got is a situation where Eighteenth and Pierce, the intersection, was supposed to have been completed on June fifteenth. We now have been told it's going to be November before it's done. The section up at Twenty-Fourth Street was supposed to be done August fifteenth, and as you can see, if you drive through there, it's a long ways from being done. The piece on Nebraska Street there by Hunt School, also supposed to be done August fifteenth, and they're at least thirty days away, maybe more, from getting that done. So what's happened is all the other projects like Twentieth Street between Nebraska and Pierce next to Davenport Cleaners, that was supposed to start August fifteenth, well, that can't start until the other projects are done. And the same goes on for Twenty-First Street from Nebraska to Jackson Street, that can't start. And so we're basically shut off from the outside world up there. Now we're told that we're going to go into November with it this year, and we're going to start next year behind the eight ball, because these other projects aren't going to get started or finished. So we're looking at probably a three-year project rather than a two-year project. I can't take it, my business is off twenty percent, year to year, simple as that, I can't, I can't do three years. I can't, and there's, and everybody up and down the street, Limblades and the coffee shop, and everybody else is in the same situation as I am. We're all single proprietors, there's no corporate money behind us, there's no, you know, big bank accounts, we're just guys trying to make a living.
No safety net, yeah.
Yeah, John, let me ask you this, you threw out quite a few dates, and Gordon Fair our engineer, I don't know if you caught all those dates or not, but you, and I don't know if we'll have an immediate answer for you right now, but can you maybe address some of this, and if you...
We can, I can look into that.
Yeah, if you can, we can look into it.
Some of the dates on there don't look quite correct for what I have, yes.
Here's, yeah, let me give you.
He's got my number and I've got his, and you don't have mine. So here's, Luanne Limble came up with this solution, let's just take next year, next spring, and finish up what we have going, and wait until the next year before we go and start on the last section, which would be from Twenty-Third Street through Nineteenth Street. Because that's going to, that basically is going to dissect our block in half for four to five months, so you can only get access to the whole block from one, like the parking lot of the south side, or that little parking lot that Davenport has on the north side, I mean, that's, that's how that's going to be impacted, but it's just, I mean, it's tough out there, you understand it, you know, you're, in one way or another, you're all in business for yourself.
Has the whole, has the whole project been bid out?
Yes.
The complete project? Okay.
The whole project's been out, and there's, there's more than just one project there. It is the Pier Street, which is Eighteenth through Twenty-Fourth, which is, I want to say about five phases, and then there's also the school. The school has multiple projects going on with multiple contractors. The prime is Sioux City Engineering on the school's project and the city's project, and he was in the audience earlier, and I just talked to him, and he said that Phase One A should be, no, Phase One should be open in the next two to three weeks, which is the Eighteenth.
Okay.
And One A, which is the northern part, should also be opening up very soon, also.
So can we get some specific answers back to John, and then John, would you make sure the Pier Street merchants have those, or if we, if we need to, we can have a meeting with them to give them an update?
Certainly.
I guess I would suggest...
We've had quite a few meetings.
Well, I understand, but I'm just trying to get some, I'm trying to get some specific answers for you.
I would suggest Public Works has a meeting to get those specific answers with the merchants, and what we can do to alleviate their problems.
The one specific question I have, are there performance rewards and penalties built into these contracts?
Incentives and disincentives, and that's something we've talked a lot about, I don't know about this contract, was there?
Only liquidated damages if they don't, so disincentive.
Which is something that we can't...
No incentives.
Yeah, and that's something that I get really frustrated with too, and I think we need to continue to try to work, because I know different businesses, I mean, I know we had this problem with Morningside Ave. too, you know what I mean, when Morningside Avenue project was being pushed down, and it's so tough when you have these different independent businesses that don't have that safety net of a corporation or of a franchise or something like that behind them, I think it, it's a disservice when we can't try to incentivize, and then these projects get farther and farther behind. I'm not blaming our city engineer, I'm not blaming, I don't think it's the city council's fault either, but we just need to try to incentivize or disincentivize when they're running this far behind and it's impacting our small businesses.
Well, as I see the situation is, is everybody's busy in town, Subserco, Sioux City Engineering, everybody that's in construction business, Lebers, they're all really, really busy, and they take on all this extra work, knowing that there's no disincentives on the, on the city jobs, they can let that drag out as long as they want. There's been weeks where there's only been one or two guys on that Eighteenth Street project. I mean, it's a much bigger job than one or two guys, you know, and I see this week, there's four or five or seven guys down there, you know, they're getting the paving done, they're trying to get the sidewalks, and I see all that happening, but that's what happens when you don't, you know?
I agree, I agree with you.
I agree also, because here, here's what happens, the way I look at it is, these companies go out and they get the bids, and they're spread all over town, and they're going to do the bids that are paying them more, they're going to get them done first before they go to the ones that aren't paying.
And the ones that have the incentives.
Exactly, exactly, so I totally agree, and we've discussed this before, you know, with incentives and, and that thing, so...
And I think it's a frustration that engineering has too, you know what I mean?
It should be SOP for a city, you shouldn't have to take backseat to everyone else.
Yep.
All right, well Gordon, you'll follow up, please?
Yes.
With John and...
We'll set up a meeting.
And the other merchants, and let's get some specific answers and something that's going to at least address the concerns that you've raised.
Well, and let us know, so if we get a phone call, we'll be able to address it.
We will.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Ernie?
Ernie Colt, forty-five twenty-six Perry Way. I just wanted to inquire about the development agreement language that we worked on. I know I've been working on it for about five years, and we got that language for the Expo project, and I'm just wondering, is that same language being used in all the development agreements, or was it just that specific one, or how is that being treated?
And I think I know what you're talking about, Nicole, and do you remember or recall that we were talking about, I think, the employee versus other situation, right, depending on the labor they were hiring? Your mic.
I keep forgetting about that, sorry, it was specifically concerning the Expo Center Agreement, which the city let, that construction contract, we included language in the construction contract, which required certification related to workers.
Mm-hmm.
And just regular development agreements where the city isn't letting contracts, we haven't implemented that language, but on construction projects, that's the direction that we're going, yes.
But what, in future ones that we let, is that what you're saying?
Yes, mm-hmm.
Very good. It really does protect the workers out there doing the work, that's, that's our main concern.
I agree.
Thanks, thank you.
That's something that we need to vote on, to put it back in.
It was in the approved language that we added into the Expo.
But I mean, going forward in those other contracts, is that something we need to, or just...
It will just be built into development agreements going forward, where possible, yeah.
Yes, letting of the construction contracts, we want to include it in the front end, so it's a requirement.
Yeah.
Would you be so kind to specifically point that out to council when we get a contract like that?
Sure.
I would appreciate that greatly.
I get through the contracts, but I, I want to make sure we have, I want to make sure we have the correct wording, and I don't know if you've seen the wording in the other contract, and that was acceptable?
I liked it.
That got, that gets the job done?
Absolutely.
Okay, so if, yeah, if you could kind of remind us and point it out.
Sure.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Ernie.
Anyone else to be heard under citizen concerns? Council concerns, council member Pete Gretkin, the floor is yours.
I just wanted to share, and I didn't think Joe would probably still be here, and we were flying through that agenda pretty quickly, so I didn't want to stop, but fourteen A was where we approved the addition of an administrative secretary position, and, and I wanted to point out that this is all with respect to the city's efforts with homeless, individuals, and trying to help out, and the city already has one of the housing services employees, the, I'm on a, it's Darlin McMullen, but I want to make, the Neighborhood Services Project Coordinator, and Darlin on her own, right now, is going out and working with homeless on full-time basis. And this information, this, this effort that the city has, both through what we're currently doing, and then the additional funding source from HUD, will be very important as we address the issue, not this week, but a week from Wednesday, Wednesday, I believe, the Sulan Street Project, which will be a meeting scheduled for next Wednesday, which will be the Eighteenth, I think, September Eighteenth, I think it's nine a.m. to eleven a.m., and, and I just wanted to point out that Darlin's doing a great job trying to make contacts right now, and, and we need help, we need assistance, the city does, and HUD will help with this Emergency Solutions Grant, ESG Grant, that will allow us to put a second person out there to track and help and do the things that we're doing, but I'll share some stats at that meeting next week of what Darlin's doing, and it's, it's really important, and I wanted to bring it up to council, so, so we were aware of the Sulan Street Project meeting next week, if, if we can participate in that, and would be great, and the other thing, I noticed on the schedule, the strategic planning session for the fire rescue, had the whole, I don't remember discussing that previously.
The council was invited prior, it's not a, you do not have to attend if you have conflicts, it runs all day.
Eight a.m. till about three-thirty p.m.
Not expected that if you, that you need to be there, this is more an opportunity to you to see how they, how they work and to provide input if you'd like to.
Okay.
And it is beneficial, I've gone for parts of it, and it's beneficial to at least come to some of it if you all can.
Yeah, to check in and see where they're going.
Yeah, I didn't recall any discussion on it, but I saw it on the schedule, someone today asked, but thank you, that's all I have.
And Pete, I know the Sulan Street Project is near and dear to your heart, and I appreciate your keeping us up to date on events as they occur, and that is a week from Wednesday at the Sioux City Public Museum, the meeting's from nine a.m. till eleven.
Yes, correct, thank you.
And so that'll be a good piece of information for you to bring.
Yes, yes, I will.
And share with the meeting.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Council member Rhonda Capron, you have the floor.
I do.
Sounds pretty formal, doesn't it?
Yeah.
What you do?
Knock it off, that's good. Okay, so the only thing I want to talk about is, the mayor and I and Dan were at the one-eighty-fifth refueling wing for the change of responsibility, so we wish outgoing Chief Master Sergeant Thomas Fennell the best of luck for his next endeavor at the National Guard Joint Headquarters in Des Moines, and we welcome our newest incoming command chief, which is Chief Master Sergeant Joseph N. M. Donovan, and we wish him the best of luck in his endeavor, and we have, we have eight hundred men and women behind him, so what I want to say is Donovan is, I believe is from Sioux City, if I'm correct, and, and he's young, and a great guy, and I, we wish the best of luck, but like I said...
You know, he's former chief of police, Joseph Frisby's number one son-in-law.
Yes, I know that.
He's a great kid.
He's a great kid, yeah, I know, I've seen Joe.
Except now, the kid to me is probably somebody from... Except now, the kid to me is probably somebody 40, I don't know, but...
Well, he's got a wife and a couple of kids.
Yes.
Yeah, so I think so.
He has his wife, great family, very good family. He'll do a great job.
Yeah, very excited, so I just want to bring that up, that we enjoyed that, so that's it.
I'm glad you did, Rhonda, because the 185th, as we all know, is, they're such an important partner in this community, and they support us, we support them, and, and it shows, if you look at their numbers, I don't have their numbers in front of me, but if you look at their retention numbers, the, the numbers that they retain really tell you a lot about Sioux City and people wanting to stay here, live here, and make this their home. Plus, the other thing that we saw Saturday was that it's really a family affair. I mean, it's, I mean, the sacrifices that families make for these men and women to serve our, our state and our country, it's just incredible, the lengths they go to, to serve, so it was just a really great event. Thanks for bringing that up.
Great ceremony.
Council Member Alex Waters, the floor is yours.
The only thing I wanted to bring up was I just wanted to reiterate about the Miracle League National All-Star Tournament. I, I just, I can't emphasize enough just how proud I was to represent a city that was able to host that, and what we've been able to build out there at Riverside Park. If you haven't been out to that facility, you need to take a look at it. The partnership, the amount of dollars and fundraising that has went in to build that complex, what it is, it was the second annual National All-Star Tournament with athletes from over 23 states, even, there was even a kid from Mexico that was here playing, and to see the joy on their faces, and more than that, like, what I loved was going out there and seeing on Friday night, the, the kids weren't even playing on the ball diamond. Like, for the first hour and a half, they weren't. They were enjoying all the other amenities, all the other accessible amenities, the splash pad, the, the...
Miniature golf.
Miniature golf, they were playing that, they were doing the merry-go-round, they were doing all the different equipment that was accessible out there, and to know how touched all of those families were, that we had something like that, and, and I said it at the dinner, and I'll say it again here, that I, I don't think the city needs to take credit for that in the slightest. I mean, I think it was such a community partnership to where private dollars and individuals were able to go out and fundraise and build a facility like that, that I just was filled with pride, that, to think that I, as a person with a disability, would be able to serve a community that would be able to embrace that and support that and have such an event, it, it meant a great, great deal to me, and so I would just, I would just urge city staff and the city manager, I mean, I think anytime that we can focus on projects like this and building those partnerships, and I know we do, I'm, I'm just reiterating it, Bob, just that, talk about such a cool thing for this community, and to know that the city can just be supportive, and I even heard from Brian now, especially with the Parks and Rec Crew with maintenance, I think that's been a big, not thorn, but just like a sticking point where it's tough to always keep it up, you know, to focus on upkeep, but I've heard that it's been so much better as of late, and really working together, and they are appreciative of that, and I am as well, so just, well done, Kevin Egard and his entire crew. It was a really cool weekend, so I was glad to be out there and represent when I couldn't be at the 185th, so I appreciate that.
And you know what, I, I went out there, I picked up a girl that I take care of, and took her out there, and it was like 4:00, and I thought that there maybe be games going on yet. There was so many people out there still excited, but I think the, the other people went to Stony Creek.
Oh, was it four on Saturday?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was the gala that night.
Yeah, so I was bummed that I didn't get a, you know, get to really see the actual thing, but there were so many people out there just working hard, and, and I talked to Kevin Egard, and, you know, I just can't, can't say enough about what a wonderful spot that is out there. I mean, it's just, it's beautiful. And, and, you know, the thing that, that impressed me more than anything, I think, was when we were out there a couple of weeks ago, the council, we played...
Yeah, wiffle ball.
Yeah, we did wiffle ball, and, and we did it for a charity, for Sulan Cares, and when you're standing out there, there's, on the right-hand side of the, on the right-hand side of the field, there's corn. Well, it's not real corn, but it's...
Metal cut, yeah.
Metal cut. I mean, it, look, it was just, oh, God, it was beautiful. And so I believe that the kids came out through the, through the corn.
So they did. They have a fence out there where the kids are able to come out as if they're coming through the cornfield, just like in Field of Dreams, and, yeah, the kids, like, pure jubilation of running from the corn out and onto the field was just, it was a really, really heartwarming thing.
Pretty good.
Anything else?
No, that's all.
Okay, thanks, Alex. I just want to thank the workers and the organized labor for the Labor Day picnic that we attended a week ago today. Gosh, I don't remember the numbers being that great. It was just a great turnout, those that served food, like Pete Gretkin and Rhonda Capron, it was, we, we kept running out.
3,000 hot dogs.
Yeah. How many hot dogs?
3,000.
3,000 hot dogs? I don't know how many hamburgers, but, but it was a great event, it was a great celebration for our workers, and the proclamation that I presented earlier today just really captured the essence of how important our workers are to our community. The next thing I have, and Bob, I just had really a bad, or hectic day, it wasn't, it was a good day, actually, but I, I was gonna ask you about the maintenance building and where we are with that. I haven't heard much about that, the garage, or the...
Central maintenance?
I'll get a report back to you on that.
Way up, okay.
I think we got a memo.
Did I miss a memo on that?
Been a while, yeah, it's been, it might have been a week or so, yeah.
Well, just, you could just send it to me then, if you guys all got it. I just, I'm, I'm just looking for an up...
I'll double back, and we'll...
Way up, please.
We'll get you updated, yeah.
Okay, I appreciate that. And then the Art Center, Sioux City Art Center will be having an open house on Saturday, September 28th, from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. The Sioux City Art Center and the Gilchrist Learning Center, they're, I, I had to look at, read this twice, because the Sioux City Art Center is marking the first anniversary of the Gilchrist Learning Center already. So that's September 28th, Saturday, from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., so I would encourage all of you to attend. Mr. City Manager, do you have anything?
I do not.